You enjoying retirement? I do too.
Did you turn everything on?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Roland.
Roland? What is it? Oh, it's dark.
Mark and pick, are they coming?
Hello? Doing? Ready? Yeah.
Good afternoon, welcome to the special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Monday, July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. It is four P M. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Denison?
Here.
Weeden?
Here.
Biansky?
Yes.
Money?
President.
Swem? Yumporum?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to make a motion, or I'm sorry, if you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name from the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Hi there, Tom Jolly, one oh seven, one twenty-two, East Front Street. I just, I was at last Monday's meeting and obviously the, the first item on the agenda is the approval of basically a half a million dollars to, and I'm still confused. It's fifty-six thousand a year for five years, but I haven't seen any explanation where that money's going. So I'm only assuming since that's about Ashley's salary, that that's locking her in for five years. So, I mean, she, I kind of felt like she pushed you guys against the corner because it's like, if you don't give this to me, we're going to lose Main Street. With that being said, I know Liv Buchanan is a big part of this, the incubator is a big part of this. Since I've seen it start up, I've seen all the food vendors pull out. I think you're down to four vendors. I know of three of the vendors that have reached out to other property managers, or owners, to see if they could rent their space. So that's leaving you with one vendor. I would not say that's a success. It'll be interesting to see how you all vote tonight because last week, four of you clearly saw that it wasn't, it should not be pushed through right away. Sean, you were very, very visibly upset. So it'll, you've had a week to talk with everyone, so it'll be interesting to see how everybody votes tonight. And I think it'll be interesting because election's coming up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Good evening, Michael Rowland, four seven nine three, Toobtree Lane. I just wanted to come up and, one, thank all of you guys for taking the time to do a special meeting and review everything. But I did want to address some of the things that we hear about Liv Buchanan that I've seen through my, my lens. So first, you know, the question of what's this going to? I, I read the proposal and it does talk about that. But there is the communication going around town about the business incubator. So first, they're not discreetly looking for anything. They're talking with me, talking with Ashley, everybody else. That's the point of an incubator, is for our business to eventually leave and become part of our town. The folks that are looking around for businesses downtown, that's a sign of success, that they're now seeing Buchanan as a long-term option for them. You can't stay in the incubator forever. It's a safe place to be able to find out if your model works in a brick and mortar model, and then if so, find a location here and stay in our town. We've talked about this time and time again, of how this is supposed to work. And we see a lot of the same, frankly, I'd call it miscommunication, but it's not, because we've, we've talked about it time and time again, it's on the website, we've discussed it in, in, in nauseam. But I don't know how anybody can look at the last year in Liv Buchanan, whether you want a DDA or you want Liv Buchanan, whether you like the idea of having a Main Street in general. Regardless of that, you cannot say nothing has happened. Munchy Mondays, there were seven vendors out there today, it's right across from my office, that, you know, all the vendors that I talked to are loving it and doing great. Again, Munchy Mondays is supposed to be something that holds us off until we eventually have enough business development in our town to have businesses open on Mondays, right? It's supposed to fill a gap. And what we're seeing is a lot of people in the community take these gaps and try to twist them into something that they're not. You know, the same thing with the mural. You know, that is something that I think our town should really be proud of, with the mural on the library, because that wasn't just Liv Buchanan, that was Rhodey Rhodey Arts Center of Buchanan, that was the public library. For everything you see on news about our community not being able to work together, taking over a year to put together an amazing long-term program for cultural stability in our town, on the, on the, essentially while we're turning into an art district, that's a huge success. And so you'll have probably a lot of people through this process tell you the doom and gloom. And we've seen, it's been a tough year for us, right? But it's not all doom and gloom. And we do have people working really hard to make us the place that we all want to live in. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
Hello, and thanks for allowing me the time. I have come before the commission several times over the past couple of years to show my support for Ashley Reel and the Michigan Main Street Program. I'm happy to sound like a broken record and express it again. My name is Tracy Dippo, my husband Dave and I are former business owners in downtown Buchanan, longtime volunteers, and believers in the potential of Buchanan. This Liv Buchanan Board, led by Ashley, is full of positive, hard-working folks who have again given generously of their time and talent to complete the task they were given, which was to complete the rigorous application for becoming a Michigan Main Street community. Here we are at the finish line. We have done what was asked of us and so much more. Others have already detailed the long list of accomplishments. Ashley has worked tirelessly under stressful conditions to get us here. We should all be incredibly grateful for her efforts on behalf of the city of Buchanan. I am asking you to support Resolution twenty, twenty-four, oh seven twenty-one, and Ashley and the Michigan Main Street Program as we move forward into the approval stage. Please vote to support this document that is required by the Main Street application. The Liv Buchanan Group has proven itself to be effective in the role of downtown revitalization, and with the tools and resources of the statewide Michigan Main Street Program, we could do so much more. Let's invest in our beloved downtown. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Peter Leacy, two oh one Moccasin, and I'm on the board of Liv Buchanan. I think there's a misconception among many people that the city is thinking about spending another fifty thousand dollars, you know, we don't have any money raising taxes, on, on Liv Buchanan, when in fact, this needs context, because as I understand it, the money is already in the budget. This isn't going to increase the annual budget expenditure for the city of Buchanan. There's, right now, there's two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in this year's budget for economic development, public relations, grants, and special projects. I'm assuming that that's where this money would go, come from. And it's money that would be spent on exactly those things, economic development, public relations, grants, and special projects. By giving this money, allocating this money to Liv Buchanan, you're leveraging what's already in your budget by using volunteers, experts, to help manage that money, to help it go farther, to apply for grants, and do other fundraising to expand the pool of money. And in the end, it is going to save the city money in a sense, because more is going to get done with the money that you've already allocated that's in the budget. So I'm here to support the resolution that's before you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Jeffrey Antisdell, one oh two East Front. Been a resident here for about twenty years and have considerable business background. I looked at the form of agree, of agreement and frankly, it's so open-ended as a contract, there are no checks and balances in terms of expenditure, it's the allocation of capital. And capital is precious for a small town like Buchanan. So what I would point out is that the, the commission has a duty to make sure that the tax dollars are being allocated and spent wisely. The, the blank check nature of the Liv Buchanan Agreement does not support that. There's, there's no pairing per se, while I, I respect all the efforts with respect to Main Street and Liv Buchanan, I've, I've drilled down on the website. It's, again, the efficacy of the spending and the controls that are lacking. I would submit that it would be better to have a narrower form of agreement wherein the city would have pairing and the ability to approve or disapprove expenditures as they come about. This is in the best interest of the taxpayers, and indeed, it would be good to have other property owners in downtown, myself being one, be able to provide input. There's additional intellectual capital available to the city that it really doesn't take advantage of. And I pointed this out time and again, perhaps the commission could use an external advisory board where you have a little bit less conflict of interest, so to speak, in approving this type of expenditure. You know, I say this with all respect to, to everybody who's worked hard to make a difference. I, I appreciate it, both as a property owner and as a citizen of this, of the city. We've, we've got a lot of fine individuals here, whom I regard as friends. I, I just would like to see a little bit more business sense being laid to bear on, on the use of capital. This has been a weakness for the commission, at least in my experience over the last twenty years. And the resources are there, the intellectual capital is there, it's just not being utilized, in my humble opinion, to the fullest extent that it should be. So that, I just leave that for your thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing none. Let's move down to new business.
I had correspondence, Sean.
I'm sorry?
I had correspondence.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We had six letters of support, one against, one asking to see a budget, and twenty-four pledges in support of Liv Buchanan.
Have you printed them out back there?
I did, they're back there if anybody wants to see them, read it fully.
Items being considered were postponed at the regular meeting held on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The commission has directed the city clerk to call special meeting to discuss and consider the proposed items. Consideration and discussion of the proposed agreement, buy and among the city Buchanan and Liv Buchanan to provide economic development, historic preservation, and promotion of downtown Buchanan. Consider and discuss the proposed resolution for Liv Buchanan's support. Ashley, go ahead.
I'll just say that I took your questions that I had received to Main, to the Main Street representative, her name is Lee Young, spoke with her, and she clarified a couple of questions that I think were there. The contract that you guys had received, the agreement, was based on another community that had a similar setup as we're pursuing. So that's what that was based on, if you had that question. I think the spirit of some of the questions was what is the minimum that could be committed to move forward? And I'll clarify that for you and for the public. Main Street requires a five-year commitment to whatever entity it is. They require a full-time manager, and they require budget for professional development. Those are the minimums that must happen, along with the resolution. They are not particularly concerned with the semantics of the contract as long as they feel it has adequate protections for their investment, which would be to bring the Main Street Program to our community, so they want to make sure that there's adequate protections to their investment. As far as the semantics, every community is different, can lay it out how you'd like. But I hope that answers some of your questions. I know it's probably up for discussion between you guys, but if there's anything else I can answer, I will be here.
Ashley, I have a question. How, how do you feel? I actually like Mr. Antisdell's idea of having the commission approve expenditures. I would think that you, I would think that it would be okay to spend smaller amounts, but if you had something you want to do that was over, say, five thousand dollars, did it would need to come in front of the commission? How do you feel about that? Do you think that's something that the board would live with? I'm just...
Yeah, I don't want to speak for the board, but every community is different, and if that's something that you guys wanted to present to them, I'd be happy to have them weigh in at their next meeting, but I don't want to speak for the board.
Right. Anybody else have any questions?
I don't really want to ask any questions, but I do want to make some comments. All of you are strong volunteers. None of you were down here when the DDA got destroyed, none of you, except for a few of the DDA members. And as much popularity, and that's what this is, is it's a popularity contest. This is not us trying to destroy, this is not me trying to destroy Main Street. This is me forcing it to run the way it's supposed to be run, and trying to get answers. And I've been screaming since it started that it's not ever been open. There's been no open meetings, you have, there's no open meetings, it's not printed, it's not printed, and it took a long time. And the five oh one, usually the five oh one comes from a large community where you have businesses backing the Main Street. Or you have a DDA where you have a good TIF program supporting it, which we would have had, which we had the money to support a Main Street. Now we're not going to get the money, even if we recreate a DDA. And none of yous come down here to stand up to stop the DDA abolishment, none of yous. So, and this contract is extremely loose, and Main Street's not going to die and go away. It may not get its application process authorized, but I can't vote for this contract, I can't vote for the way this is set up. I can't, I refuse to. That's all I wanted to say, Your Honor.
I just want to, I just want to say that I've heard time and time again that the Main Street Program has been set up illegally, that they're on the take, and yada, 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 yada. We received an email from MEDC, and it says, and I quote, "A nonprofit organization is one of the models for a Main Street organization in Michigan and used nationally. It's an acceptable organizational structure for a Main Street organization to be successful locally and be accepted into the Michigan and National Main Street Networks." Every, everything Main Street has done since it started, or I'm sorry, Liv Buchanan has done, they've had open meetings, they've tried inviting other people to attend, and they've been working hand in hand and side by side with the people at MEDC ever since it started, to make sure we were doing it correctly. So I just want to throw that out there.
So, I had made a proposal to the other commissioners, including Tim Lynch, and I, I completely respect where the people are coming from who support the DDA, the dissolution of the DDA, I was part of that, right? There's no mystery to it. You know, you have the authority to change your mind and look back with hindsight, and maybe that wasn't the best action to take, but it is what it is, and so here we are. So my proposal to the group before me, and the emails that I sent, and the discussions that I had, was that we do support Liv Buchanan financially. However, what I believe can happen, and it can work in tandem with the recreation of a DDA. Now, the apprehension is, of course, that the same toxicity that existed within the DDA will resurrect itself. However, with the reinstatement of a DDA, people have to submit applications, and who gets approved to sit on that board would be within the preview of this commission and the individuals who were voted in in November. So with that, I believe that we can establish a dollar amount to continue the processes that Liv Buchanan has done and the great things that they've accomplished that are far greater than many other programs I've seen within this city. The, the cohesiveness of the group and the dedication of volunteers, you'll never find a better group to do that. I think the Northside, I apologize. That was another group that definitely come together, and you can prove that good attitudes and positive thoughts and, and really definitive outcomes are established for people to have that, that feeling that they know they're putting their heart and soul behind something that Buchanan can support. I believe they're doing the same thing. So in that proposal, what I suggest is that the city financially, through the budgetary process, has already allocated those funds. And at the same time, we recreate the DDA. Once the DDA is reestablished, then the DDA would then become the financial arm of Liv Buchanan, okay? It gives us, it checks all the boxes, it gets us our DDA back, it gets our TIF money back. We have control over who sits on the board, and without question, I guarantee everybody in this room does not want the toxic nature that we want back, but I do believe that we have to push back into that arena, okay? We have new business owners downtown, we have structured thought, we know what's happened, we've seen it. We've seen it play out online, we've seen it play out in front of us, we've seen it in every facets of our life. So with that, I do not know what the dollar amount is to continue the processes to get us to the next finish line, but that's my proposal, that we recreate the DDA, we request Tim Lynch and the necessary powers to make that happen through Lansing, and then once that's established, and we continue to support the Liv Buchanan in that fashion.
Does the DDA disappear, or does the Main Street Program disappear? Or is it just ongoing? You can answer that, Ashley. If we don't accept this at all, does Main Street dissolve, and who does it dissolve in? I mean...
No, if you, if you don't accept the resolution, like if you don't move us forward, I mean...
Right.
If we, it still exists as an organization, they may choose what they do after that. The efforts to move forward would be halted for this year.
And we wouldn't be available to apply for another three years, is that correct?
I clarify completely, that was true at the time of our application. I think she told me today, they changed that, it's an, it's a rolling basis. So they just changed that from the time of our application, that you would have an opportunity to apply again as communities become ready.
She wants more Main, Main Street programs, it's that simple. But the, and the thing about it is, is, you know, I want a DDA back. And I have squawked, you know, I don't think anybody's thinking it's crooked, they just don't like the idea that it's not open. They don't like the idea of giving it another sixty thousand dollars when we weren't giving that much to a DDA. And we didn't have a director that was working basically on the DDA only. So, I mean, that's where all my arguments are coming from on this. And we could put a DDA together in ninety days if we chose to, you know? But it would have to be aggressive, and it's, you know, all of you people are wonderful volunteers, you're all the people that we see down here all the time. That's why you all hate me, because I am so steadfast in how I feel, and I don't deliver it well at all. But my delivery is my delivery, and it's always about money. And there was never any questions about where is the money coming from, ever? Not to the treasurer, not to the city manager, not to any of us commissioners. It was brought down to us last week, and I postponed it. I didn't postpone it for a week and have it presented to me the same way it was a week ago? This is not accomplish nothing. It put the whole city hall on call. We had to contact lawyers and everything else so we could have a meeting discussing the exact same thing we discussed last week. Exact same stuff, wasting everybody's time, and this is not a popularity contest, I'm sorry, it's not. It's a money contest, and we really need to get a grip on it mentally.
So Dan, with that being said, and, and with the, the information that I provided, with the potential opportunity of that, what would you suggest? Like, we can go and listen to about all of the, the comings and goings, and why we're here, we're not here, let's move forward and try to see...
I want to put this on, I want to create a DDA, period. Period. And then we'll move forward from there.
Well, I think Mark's proposal is referring to that. And that would be one of the things that we could look at.
But we passed, we passed the resolution in January to give them our support. And then they resent another resolution to us last minute for money.
I get it, and that's the whole purpose.
And we're paying a salary already, and that question was brought up.
But that's part of the requirements of the MEDC, that we have to have a director for this program, right? So we're not talking about the factual things that we can't change.
But that question was asked, if that money counted.
Well, that's with the current proposal, right? So let's, let's discuss my potential proposal. I'm not saying that this is mine, is, this is by no means me trying to bulldog anybody into this. What I'm trying to do is to establish, look, if we're going to move forward with finances, we have to do something, right? I think there's, there's a cognitive awareness within the group that we have to do something, right? And if we're going to create the DDA, and I realize the two of us sat on that board that dissolved it, right, wrong, or indifferent, then we're going to move forward with a new DDA, and eventually they will take over. So we have to keep them moving forward, and this is part of economic development, people, this isn't something that money, is that we're going to take any extra money from the citizens to accomplish this. We've already said that we're going to put, to, to the gentleman's point, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, and not saying we're doing fifty, would have gone to them, so let's come up with a smaller dollar amount, and then establish a DDA per request of the commission, and, and we create that to, to continue with the TIF money payments to the Liv Buchanan Program. And we can, we can figure out that dollar amount once the DDA is approved.
If we put fifty thousand dollars into a DDA, it would be financially very much more viable for the city and the downtown. The Main Street basically has no grant capabilities whatsoever. There is one grant that they can get, and there's a snowball's chance of them getting it. The DDA opens all kinds, but it's all about power and trust, and, you know, so...
So what you're looking for is essentially, within my proposal, meets that expectation, is what I'm saying.
If we're going to spend this kind of money, I want it written up properly, we'll give the DDA the fifty thousand dollars and let them delegate it the way they want to.
But in the, in the interim, we have to have the time to do it, and the money has to be allocated to keep...
We can redo an application for Main Street. We can keep working on it the way we've been working on it. We've had some really big mistakes on Main Street.
With, with that in mind, when is, so when they say it's rolling, is it monthly, yearly? What's the, did they she establish what that?
This is new information to me. As of today, the deadline they had given me was August, and I can't remember if it's thirty or thirty-one off the top of my head. So as of today, she told me there's a roll, I don't know what that means, if that means we would, if that means we have another year after that deadline if we miss that one, I don't know, unfortunately.
Okay, so with that in mind, I mean, you have to understand that if we take care of this and hand the money with the, with the idea that it's going to essentially end up back with the DDA, and we cover the cost to ensure that we have the October event, we have any other event that occurs, any other requirements at Liv Buchanan, it's still economic development, and we know that the DDA is being created, then we don't need to give the DDA money, their, their TIF money's going to be created through the establishment of the DDA.
As long as the motion says, upon creation of a new DDA.
Yeah, because then we're going to have to do a resolution to move the Main Street underneath the DDA, so that they report through the DDA and then their budgetary...
You know, I don't want it left open at all, because I won't go for it, because I'm sorry.
There was DDA, there was secondary groups within the DDA, ad hoc or not, that still had to go through the budgetary process to get approval through the commission regardless if it was over a certain dollar amount.
Yeah, they did, but they didn't. I mean, Peter and Tracy could tell us a lot about what went on, and it was making a lot of loans, it was making a lot of grants, and it was quite functional, and it was the downtown.
Would we have to financially support then a DDA and the Main Street Program?
No, the DDA would support the Main Streets.
The DDA couldn't even support itself the last time, they were complaining about eight thousand dollars that the city was charging them to do the administration.
Well, let's not get into all the record keeping.
No, but I, I, that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate thing, though.
The thing about it is, how much money was given...
The DDA, no wait, the DDA was getting charged eight thousand dollars a year for administrative fees, and that was a huge problem, they couldn't afford it.
Because we had a clown for a city manager, and I'm going to say it that way, I'm sorry.
But how are we going to, how are we going to figure that out if we do another DDA?
I agree, and I think a lot of that goes back to the fact, now, we know they had money in the coffers, right?
If I can say one more thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I keep hearing it, I see it in one of the letters in here, the fifty thousand dollars that's going to Liv Buchanan is not fifty thousand dollars plus six thousand dollars plus Ashley's salary.
Right.
A little bit of that fifty thousand is going to Ashley to cover her cost as the, the executive of Main Street. So her, her extra salary would be in that fifty. It's not above and beyond it, I just want to make sure. It's not above and beyond it, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that.
That's not the way I read it. That's not the way I read it at all. It's a fifty-six thousand dollars above and beyond the salary.
No.
But anyhow, there was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the DDA coffers when it was all said and done. And as far as the eight thousand dollars that City Hall was charging the DDA, the reason why that was fought is because it was so crooked. Because the DDA was gonna combine with the chamber, Jerry and I worked very hard on that, we talked about it a lot. And once we accepted that, because we wanted to hire a full-time director between the DDA and the chamber, so we'd have a director, which we did, and that fell apart, but.
But I think, but I think every time the chambers had a, had a hired director, every time the DDA had a, for the while, didn't DDA have a hired director?
It was our economic development officer.
Oh, it was Deb who was actually running it?
It was always. So, the point being is, we had them and Bill decided that he wasn't going to allow the DDA to operate out of City Hall without charging us per, per hour. Where that, that's where the eight thousand dollars came from. And the DDA was not gonna pay that because it was downright nasty, for the lack of anything else to call it.
I mean, I have serious concerns about fund, finding good people who are going to work for nothing. And I have fears that you're not gonna be able to fund, but, number one, I can't believe we're already been talking about the DDA. We're supposed to be talking about LibBucannon and the Main Street program, but I, I fear, I fear that we're gonna create two things that you're gonna have to pay somebody to run and then both of them are gonna fail. That's, that's my legitimate, Tracy, if you'd like to come up and say something, you can.
Here, I might need your help, but, um, I would just like to clarify, I know you guys know, but does everyone understand where the DDA gets their TIF money? Comes from the property taxes of the building owners downtown. And it's only the incremental tax increase in property value from the time the DDA starts going forward. So, we, when we first started a DDA and Redbud Hardware was the only retail in town, there were a lot of empty businesses. There was a lot of new tax capture and a TIF in our DDA. That is not the case now. To start a DDA now, it would take a long time to build up much money because there's less buildings available, less tax, like room for tax improvements, you know? Creating more value on those buildings, it just isn't the same situation. We, that was the big mistake in dissolving the DDA is we lost our starting point. And now, to start now, you wouldn't have a lot of money to fund a DDA for years and years. Not that it couldn't happen down the road, but you're not gonna start at the same point that we did twenty years ago. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Did you have something to add, Peter?
No, I think.
Oh.
Next year, if we do a DDA this year, next year they'll get, you know, ten thousand dollars or something. I mean, it's gonna be so miniscule at the beginning that you're gonna be spending money to keep it going, you're not gonna be making money.
So.
They levy a tax.
The DDA can, at least in the old, the DDA could levy two mills. I don't know if that's still the case because things were changed in twenty eighteen with, uh, new legislation.
Right, that was part of the, that was one of the arguments for getting rid of our DDA was the money they were gonna be allowed to capture was going to go down.
It's going down and, I mean, one thing they could do is levy a tax, but I don't think downtown business owners want to create a DDA so they could tax them. So, since it's a tax increment financing, the first year's budget or, uh, tax revenues is gonna be miniscule. Because there's no increase, or hardly any increase, in the tax rate over the baseline in that first year. And in the second year, hopefully, a little bit more, you get a recession, might go down. So, it's, uh, it's not a clear silver bullet way of ma- making money, yeah.
It's, that's not the point, though, here. I mean, we, we can't go back, we can't unbuild, rebuild that bridge, it's broke.
Right.
The thing about it is, is, we're gonna give, we're gonna donate another, however way you wanna do it, fifty-six thousand dollars is the number we're using. You know, we might have to help the DDA, you know, build itself back up, 'cause we destroyed it. And I say we, we're, we as a commission destroyed it. Because some of us couldn't convince others to change their minds, so we're all guilty. But the point being is, the DDA allows us, it's not about the money captured, it's about the money that we can get because we have a DDA. And Rich has sat, stood up here and told us.
What money from the, I don't understand.
Grant money. When we have a D, when we have.
DDA's tax capture, they just.
I understand that, but you stood right there at that pedestal and said that, when you write grants, when you write grants, if you have a DDA in the city, it makes us more eligible for grants from the state.
I did, I did not say that. I said, if you have a funded DDA, then you have capital. But like these people have said, a DDA does not become solvent or effective until five or ten years from establishment. So, right now, we're talking about, you guys are looking backwards, but we're looking forwards and we have two and a half years of work on the line here that we can't pull the plug on. The DDA in this discussion is a red herring. It is an effective tool that we could pursue at a future date. Um, but it is not contingent on what we do with all this momentum and community effort that has brought us to being an inch, on the inch yard line from being approved as a Michigan Main Street.
I mean, if I can, I would respectively, respectfully, like to ask that we move forward with the LibBucannon idea without the DDA involved. If it means reducing the amount of money that we give to LibBucannon to move forward, that's fine and good, but I don't wanna tie it to something that, number one, doesn't exist. And number two, we really don't know how much money we're gonna be able to make from a DDA.
Right.
And see, this really, this vote really isn't against or for LibBucannon. It's all about the way this contract was presented at the very last minute. That's my personal opinion.
Well, then, I, then I, then I would say we move forward and, and we start going through that contract and let's approve it based on changing the contract to say things that you guys want it to say.
Make the motion the right way and I might move forward.
So, Mark's motion, if Mark's motion cited this with the, uh.
Respectfully.
Actually, actuality of bringing in a DDA.
I don't think we.
I think they should be separated.
I don't think we need to tie together.
I don't think they should be tied together.
I think that, you know, the people who've sat on the DDA and they presented that, that reality of what we're dealing with and the, the long-term, the long-term effect is, is going to take a while, right? So, then with that, with that being, with being cognizant of that, then I believe that the right thing to do is to continue to move LibBucannon forward. I do agree with the, the DDA creation, I think it is something that in the long term, we could benefit to have that return. But with, with everything in light of that, that there's really, I mean, we, we have economic development, we put money into this gentleman and this young lady back here so that we can have the volunteers that we have. And I don't believe that pulling the plug on it, and we've already established the budgetary line item for it, then what, what purpose of the line item would it, would it be?
Can I say something real quick? That was on the DDA, and I wasn't happy with you two when you decided this was all of it. Because, you know, it was something we were trying to work hard about, but we had an administration that didn't work with us.
Right.
You know, it was a, it was a battle every time.
Yep.
These guys have done ten times more than we could have ever accomplished.
I agree.
And, you know, it wasn't just us, it was who we were working with. You know, Deborah never came in, Bill Marksborough.
We got it, yeah, we got it, that, yep. I just don't wanna get into history lesson again, I'm, you're good.
I mean, seriously, these guys have done way more than we could have ever accomplished. It's such a little bit of time.
I just wanna make one point on the DDA. Uh, it's a tool that we could pursue in the future. It is not attached to tonight's discussion.
Right.
It is an additional tool that could be used if the leadership feels, uh, that it's, that's the path they wanna take. It will cost money to establish a DDA. We would need, uh, technical experts, legal review, and it would take four to six months to be able to do it.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, there. Uh, so, Dan, and to his point, I think then, in the resolution, I think that we have some language that dictates the, the budgetary expectations. I think the, Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the MEDC has budgetary requirements within their preview so that they know exactly where the funding from the city is being utilized, is that correct?
So, based on, um, what we establish as far as where funding is coming from, they need to see a budget. So, that's what is required, um, as I said earlier, the base minimum is, there needs to be a full-time Main Street manager. It doesn't need to be me, and they can hire, they can help you hire someone else. I'm just saying that that's one of their requirements. They require there being money for, um, training for that person and a little additional for the board. Um, and they require a resolution, as Dan pointed out, I did bring one in January that they didn't like because it didn't have any mention of financial support, so they asked me to do it again. So, they want a resolution of, of support that includes the declaration of funding.
Do you have to, do you have to have budgetary line items for the MEDC to review to indicate where?
I have to know what our, um, uncommitted funds are, so I can't just go with grants that I hope to achieve. I have to have, I'll use Dan's word, capital, I have to have some kind of uncommitted funds that I can put into a budget.
Okay.
Now, the other thing that I would like to add is, I think one of the things that, so when Ashley just said, you don't have to hire me, you can hire someone else. But I don't know how you're gonna find someone. One of, one of the things that's attractive to me about the LibBucannon doing what they've proposed is the fact that we would give her a little bit more money on top of her current salary to be the executive for LibBucannon. If she were to quit tomorrow, I don't know where we're gonna find someone with her expertise and be able to pay them that little amount of money.
Right.
Or to try and do all the things that she currently does and that. I mean, I just think that it's a good, I think that's a good deal. I think that's a good deal.
Right.
Can I reiterate about the uncommitted funds, just to clarify? They wanna see some amount of money in each of their four items. So, they have the design, promotion, organization, economic vitality.
Gotcha.
And they didn't say there was, they said if you're funding a position, it's contradictory to what they told me, but they said if you're funding a position and you have some budget that showed up.
Right. So, I think that's the key component to this entire discussion, is that the reason, and I, I support the fact that we postpone this for this very reason. I think getting this type of detail, this amount of attention and the communication out to the public so that the, the supported group and the, and the naysayers all have a chance to express their feelings on this topic. And I do believe that what you've brought back to the table, the confidence you have today compared to that Monday night, and rightfully so, has much more impact than we would have had on that Monday night. So, I appreciate you, thank you for that.
Ashley, can I ask you a question? If we were to, if, if, if this contract was to call out, I know there's supposed to be a fi- you said, they, do they actually tell you there has to be a five-year commitment?
Because that is, if you get accepted into the select level, which is what we're applying for, we're engaged already, but so you can call yourself a Michigan Main Street. So, you are eligible for the select level services that they provide, including opportunities for two different grants that you can't get anywhere else. Um, they are going to be committing five years to, so, for example, in Niles, they are on the ground. When they got established, they're one of our older, um, Main Street communities in Michigan. They're on the ground, they were there, and they said, what is our strategy for economic development in Niles, and they chose to at that time. So, they put all their eggs in that basket, they did market analysis, they came up with a strategy for how to market that, how to attract the kinds of businesses. That's the kind of resources they'd be dumping into Buchanan. So, they estimated around a hundred thousand dollars of technical assistance. They don't want the rug pulled out from under them and have a commission say, actually, we're not committed to the Main Street program anymore. So, they were asking for.
A long-term, a longer-term commitment. So, you kinda answered my question. My question was going to be, do you think that they would accept something that said that we were going to review how LibBucannon did every year? And then said yes to the next year, but.
I don't, if we would, if you prefer to postpone, I, I think they wouldn't accept that, I don't believe.
You don't?
As, with this round. I think they, the commission would need to be committed to five years, that's what I've been hearing is the base minimum.
You can do it both ways, you know? But, the one question I have is what percentage of your time do you spend on Main Street? And what percentage of your time do you spend doing other functions in City Hall?
Kind of a Venn diagram, a lot of it overlaps and is useful for both. For example, today I showed a business around the incubator, but I also talked to them about other investments in town. So, it's both, so it's kind of hard to say that one is, that they're not related to each other. That's kind of the point of having, in my opinion, a staff person within City Hall be the person that's engaged in your Main Street program, that they can align so closely with the mission of the city, along with the mission of the downtown redevelopment.
Do you punch the time clock like everybody else or not?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
To me, that's one of the things that makes this a really good idea, sorry to interrupt you, Dan. But the fact that she's working on economic development anyway.
Right. Well, in the, in the budgetary line.
And our resources are still going towards economic development and you have all these volunteers who are gonna be spending your money wisely, right?
It seems like this fifty thousand dollars, you know, uh, was bone of contention. Is that, uh, cut in stone, is that set in stone, that, that, that dollar amount?
No, you, you guys can decide what you want. If you wanna just say just salary or, but that's the baseline. If you wanna say just that, you can do that.
What did the city give you last year?
My salary?
No, not your salary. We all pretty much know.
LibBucannon gave you?
Yeah, I mean, between the signs and the money that the city actually voted that you come down here and ask for.
Ten thousand dollars. You guys gave us five thousand dollars for operating and you gave us five thousand dollars for the sign.
We only gave you five thousand for the sign? How much money have you raised outside of?
I was just gonna say, and Ashley fundraised for the balance.
Yes. So, how much money have you raised fundraising?
Last year, we had forty-five, around forty-five, Peter can speak to that. Um, and most of it was, well, I don't have my sheets in front of me, but we had a, a number of grants. We had a sponsorship, we had a lot of in-kind, which I'm not gonna count here, um, and then support from the, and then we had some income from the incubator.
And does the treasurer see all them receipts?
No.
Well.
We've funneled about fifty-five, or deposited about fifty-five thousand dollars into our checking account since we.
Over the last two years?
Yeah, since we started.
Over the last two years.
I guess it's a year and a half.
But our treasurer hasn't got any, or our city manager doesn't have any oversight over that at all.
No, that could be arranged in this, sounds like that's a, something you guys are suggesting, but at this point, no.
I've been screaming blue bloody murder about it for two and a half years. Blue bloody murder.
Yeah, we're aware.
The accountability. And I'm being very nice tonight on purpose. Because the thing about it is, is, it doesn't matter, it's all about dollars and cents. It's all about coming to us three months out, not thirty days before. And you all knew, we all knew. You were at that meeting when they came down here from Lansing. And I say things to shock on purpose, to see what kind of response I get. And I usually get the responses I want. Sometimes, this meeting's been constructive. Monday night didn't need to be the way it was, but nobody reached out to anybody, nobody talked to nobody. So, that's everybody's fault. And I refuse, I text, but I don't get calls back and I don't get explanations. So.
Can I, can I ask, what, what portion of the fifty thousand would go towards your salary?
That's up to you guys.
It hasn't been broken out yet, has it?
That's entirely up to you guys.
I think it should be up to city manager and the treasurer. I don't think we have the capability of making a decision like that personally. So, I think we ought to ask city manager and the treasurer, not right now.
No, not in this meeting, but the, you determine.
But, we don't have the capability.
The city manager determines that salary regardless, right? Doesn't need a resolution, that's something that, the position and the salary are determined by the city manager is a current state. Same thing with everybody here.
I mean, I'm excited to get that much money, but I'm appalled that we don't know nothing about it.
As you mentioned, like, three months ago, when the state came there, made, what they reiterated to you and to us, what they want, it's something explicit. So, that it is out in the open, what the agreement asks. So, whatever you put into the contract just needs to be explicit.
Everybody should listen sometimes to the rumors and the cat calls on Facebook. You don't necessarily have to respond to them, but maybe we should start paying attention to some of it. Because if it appears to be a pig, it probably is. If you put lipstick on it, it doesn't work, so if you listen to the complaints, sometimes you get a lot more information. So if you listen to the complaints, sometimes you get a lot more information.
Okay, how do, so, um. I'm not sure how to move forward.
Well, let's look at, what are the, some of the top, uh, questions that came out of the group today? And then if we believe that the resolution has some merit and we wanted to add or subtract aspects of those to, to put into the, the purple, or the, into the resolution.
The not to exceed.
Right. Anything of that nature, is that, is that helpful? To, so if somebody, if I, if I make a motion to approve resolution X, Y, Z, and with the addition of these tip-top items that came out of this discussion today, I believe that we might be able to move forward on this.
Are, are, by give, by giving the city manager and the treasurer the ability to set the, the funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't want a semi-annual, I want every three months, you know? And the city manager and the treasurer can, because it's pretty much a closed door. And what you're doing is by authorizing this contract, you're basically just letting them do what they wanna do with Cibbucannon's name.
Right. And we believe that everything you guys would do would wholeheartedly be the right thing. But I think to have somewhat of an oversight for the community aspect of things, I believe that that would be something that would, would squelch some of the problems. So what, so we wanna have, we wanna have budgetary oversight. Income, salary established by city manager and treasurer, correct?
And then have them report to the city every quarter?
Yeah, and I think that's perfectly fine. The DDA had to present a budget to us.
I don't think they care. I think they'd be glad to brag about what they're doing.
I agree.
That's transparency and, you know.
Right.
So.
Make a motion.
All right. So I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-four dot zero seven slash twenty-one for Libbucannon, uh, support. Uh, salary, that includes salary will be established by the city manager and the city treasurer. Uh, they will have budgetary requirements quarterly to report to the city, uh, commission, uh, on their budget. And what was the last one? Was there a third?
I think there was a.
Okay. Is that good? Cala?
You want salary discussed by the city manager and city treasurer?
They're gonna establish what's the salary.
They're going to come up with the budget for that.
With a budget.
With a budget, but you, and you put salary.
Well, I mean, the budget is going to, it, it has to cover part of her salary increase. So I mean, that's going to be part of the discussion.
So city manager and, okay, now I got you.
Okay, sorry.
So, and you got that and?
Is that okay with you, Tim? Or would I, would you rather? I mean, the thing about it is, it's, it's not really up to him to do this.
Well.
It should be, Libbucannon should have, we should be able to make this motion so that Libbucannon comes at us with a contract and a budget of what they want us to accept.
I know, but, but the thing, but the thing is, they're wor- they're working with a contract that, I mean, there was a couple, actually, that, they got a couple of contracts from ID, MEDC saying that's what they look like. I mean, so they're working off of what the state gave them, unfortunately.
But she's also.
Go figure, it's Lansing.
And she's still a, she's still an employee and a, and a staff member of, of the city manager. No matter which way you slice it, she ultimately.
Let's reread the motion.
Yeah.
Get, get a little bit of support on it and then go into discussion. Well, okay.
So you're gonna approve resolution twenty-two-four oh seven twenty-one with the amendments that the budget will be put together by the city manager and treasurer, including the Main Street executive manager's salary. And they will report budgetly quarterly to the city commission.
That's all.
As a motion.
No. I mean, 'cause once the first part's already established, the budgetary requirements quarterly will, will be simple. They're, they'll have all the doc.
What budget is the city manager putting together?
I don't, that, that part, I, no, not the city.
That's what I'm confused about too.
Can I, can we just let this die and start over now that we've discussed it?
Is there, is there a motion, or I'm sorry, is there a second?
I'll support that.
Aw, man, what'd you do that for?
We can go into discussion, go down and turn it down.
So the budget, to answer your question, the budget we're talking about is basically this fifty thousand, or if you think we need to shave that down a bit, um. That would be up to your and the treasurer's discretion, is what we're saying.
There's an agreement and there's a resolution.
I think I, I, I would, and I don't, you guys can tell me the resol-
The agreement has monetary figures. I don't believe the resolution does.
Now, the resolution was just to say we support them, right?
Financially.
Correct.
It includes the word financially, it does not have a number.
But I think we're all willing to give something. It's just, I think the, the budget is the, the contra- or the MOU is the part that we're having, uh, issues with.
We did the resolution in January to support.
No, the one we just did the other night.
No, we did one in January. We did one in January to show our support of Main Street program.
Yes.
Right. But it didn't say that we would support them financially, which is why they made us rewrite it and that's the one we did Monday.
Well, what is support?
Pat on the back?
No, financially, that's what I'm saying. That you, we have to say that we're, we support them financially. It doesn't have to be fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it, it can be whatever you feel like.
So I'm being told that this fifty-six thousand dollars includes the salary of a director?
It does.
Put in, so we'd only have to, we could subtract what we pay Ashley and give that to Main Street, correct? If you put it in real simple math terms, if that's what it is.
If you subtract what?
Yeah, it would just be a, it'd just be a lesser amount for Libbucannon essentially is what you're saying.
I don't wanna say what her salary is, but fifty-six thousand dollars minus her salary, and that's the money that we give to them every year. If, if her salary's part of that fifty thousand dollars, that's what's not explained, you know?
Right.
And the whole question about the DDA, it's always flip-flop whenever we come down here and start asking real questions about, you know, what it is and what it shouldn't be.
I'm not understanding your question about, I don't understand what you just said about her salary though.
You don't understand what?
What you're saying about her salary, what you just said.
You said that the fifty-six thousand dollars includes the salary of a director.
It includes giving her a little bump in pay to be the executive.
So we're gonna give, well, she's already executive, we don't need to give her a bump. So I mean, the way I understood you.
Okay, go ahead.
The way I understood you, the fifty-six thousand dollars includes her salary.
It includes the bump to her salary, is what I.
And then the fifty thousand, we still go to Libbucannon.
But see, a bump, what is a bump? You know, is it five, is it ten, is it twenty-five? I mean, that, you know, we gotta be very explicit, we're talking about taxpayers' money here. So I mean.
I get that.
Um.
I do think you owe me to be explicit about it, um, and I'd be happy to talk with Tim about it if you'd like, or whatever you wanna discuss. Just tell me how you want me to.
Well, you know, your deadline's August thirty-first, correct? Is that?
That's the deadline that they gave me for this round. I'm not sure what else they would make us do and when they would open up, because like I said, they just changed. It was that it was every three years.
So if, if we, now that we've had this hash-out, two hash-outs, why don't we postpone this till the regular meeting, draw it all up and present it to us so that we can vote on it?
Would you like Libbucannon to do that or would you like?
Yeah, no, I want Libbucannon, but I want it to be presented to him a week ahead of time so he can help you with it.
I had heard from Commissioner Swam that he wanted the lawyers to look at that.
We don't need the lawyers to look at everything that we do.
The lawyers looked at it, they've actually responded to us.
So do you guys have a revision in mind?
We have some ideas.
They didn't revise it, they just, he just kinda sent us his thoughts on it.
So, I mean, you can get with him on that, but we have two weeks because there's not a meeting, a regular meeting for two weeks, correct?
Correct.
Our first city hall meeting?
August twelfth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Your next meeting.
So I'm not gonna make a motion 'cause there's a motion on the floor.
I'm cur- I'm curious how you feel about what mark, the motion marked made.
Well, it, it was getting tangled up with.
Right.
Dollar amounts in a resolution and the, the agreement is the agreement I saw last week that there are some issues with that. And Peter's right, we do have money in the budget for economic development. Uh, in that, in that agreement, in that regard, I didn't see that until last week and I have some concerns with that agreement. But I'm willing to work with the commission on helping it go forward.
So we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Can you read it one more time? Before we have a roll call?
We might as well just let it die, just do roll, hey, as far as I'm concerned, let it die and then we do.
Well.
Yeah?
I just, I'd like to.
All right, all right.
Okay. So.
Right.
Approving resolution twenty-two-four oh seven twenty-one with the changes that the budget be put together with city manager and treasurer with salary in there. And Libbucannon presenting budget quarterly reports.
I mean, that's basically what Dan just said anyway, is to let you guys figure it out and then present it to us again.
But it's not a good resol- that's not a good motion. That is a very dumb motion.
I would say.
I agree. I agree.
There's a lot of pressure on Tim and.
Yep. That's not how it was supposed to come out, but that's fine.
That's not the way this is supposed to work.
So we'll just vote and kill it and then.
Yeah.
Vote and kill it.
Okay.
All right, let's have a roll call.
Dennison.
Yeah.
Whedon.
No.
Vianzki.
No.
Money.
No.
Motion dies.
All right, so now you wanna give, you wanna tell them to go ahead and work out a new contract to bring to us on August twelfth?
I will make a motion to postpone this till the next regular meeting and they need to work out. And when I say they, Libbucannon, because this is not Tim's responsibility.
Right.
But Tim needs to be kept in the loop. So my motion is for Libbucannon to rewrite all this and present it to us so that we can pass it before the deadline, the end of August.
I'll support.
That was a lot there. You wanna read that one, Ben?
We're postponing, we're gonna postpone items A, one and two. I'm gonna put both of those in there together, to have Libbucannon make the corrected amendments to bring in front of the city commission on August twelfth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cal.
So that we, so that we understand exactly how much money be, is being spent, how much is going towards the salary, how much is going towards the organization? How often they're gonna come in front of us?
And, and this, I'm sorry, just, I was supposed to write this, and the city manager is gonna give that number.
Well, I think what you should probably do is write up the way you see it, present it to him, and then he's just stated that he has some concerns about the way it was brought. So he's going to change it a little bit anyway, is my guess. So why don't you write it up the way you'd like to see it? And then you guys can all hash it out here in City Hall before you bring it back to us.
And I can guarantee, knowing you as you are and, and the definitive way you like to attack things, I think that when you come back, we're all gonna feel much better about the, the resolution to this entire thing. I really do believe that. I, I know certain, just seeing your reaction to that, so. It's, it's, I, it, it's been tough, but I think that ultimately we're gonna have a better taste in our mouth as a community and as a commission.
Does that work for you?
I've got an extreme workload right now.
Yep.
Collective bargaining with two unions. We're trying to close out the financial year and I've got a new permit issued on the wastewater treatment plant. To try to get this done in two weeks is, I don't know if it's even doable.
I don't think the majority of the pressure is, is on Tim whatsoever.
Well, Tim, the only thing I'm gonna ask you is to share what you got with her that we got from the lawyer. And then she can write, I don't want you to.
We've got the attorney's comments.
I don't want you to.
I want the commission to see these recommendations and I want everybody to have a adequate time to fully vet the agreement.
So if we, if, so if we moved it to the twenty-sixth, would, from the twenty-sixth to the, yesterday, I, I heard that the thirtieth was the deadline, not the thirty-first, by the way. But does that give you enough time if, if we were to approve it on the twenty-sixth, having four days to?
I mean, if you approve it and there's no revisions and I submit it, I mean, I suppose.
Just having it done by the twenty-sixth help you out?
Yeah, it would help.
I mean, basically, all I want you to do is proofread it. I don't want you doing any of it.
No, I, Dan, I agree with that too. I don't think the intention was for Tim to be intimately involved with this at all. I think it's just a cursory, uh, knowledge of the.
Come from Ashley, get approval and you just go right back. Put eyes on it, Tim, if you can.
Well, I do that.
Yeah, well, I know you do. I'm well aware.
And of course, we'll see it beforehand anyway.
And one more agreement being published online for review.
It'd be in the packet.
It'd be in the packet.
Yep, in the required time.
So do you want me to revise my motion?
To the twenty-sixth, if you would.
To the twenty-sixth?
Just amended.
I'll support.
You can amend it.
I was already ready for you.
So my motion's so amended?
Thank you.
To the second meeting.
Twenty-sixth, I got you.
Yep.
Of August.
Yep.
Okay, can we have a roll call, Ben? Support.
Whedon?
Yes.
Vianzki?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to item B, consideration authorized, uh, city manager Tim Lynch to execute a construction contract and documents relating to downtown infrastructure contract number one with K and R. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to give Tim the authority to do that?
Also move.
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Vianzki?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swam, I'm sorry, Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving down to public comment on non-agenda items, someone like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Kenny Stolcom Correa. So I've been trying to follow all the people that are running for commission come fall. And I don't know who three of the four are. I, I, I'm not bragging, but I do a lot of community service in this town. I, I volunteer for the chamber, for the Leos, for the Lions Club, for the city, for Fernwood. And three of the people, I don't know who they are. I wouldn't know them if I seen them on the street. But when I started to ask about these people, I got a lot of emails and letters and trash sent to me that's being written. And when the town was called the circus, I know who the ringleaders are, Carla, Dan and Alan. It's not a joke, that's who they are. They cause all this drama and horrific stuff about this community that is not true. And they say bad things about other people that already sit up here on this commission that is not true. And it really bothers me because then they put Bible verses on Facebook and on different things. And there's pictures of Carla in lingerie up at the church children's park, all over the place. I mean, if you guys, I don't know if any of you are in the room that's running, if you guys are running and you are part of her, that's a disgrace. It's a disgrace. Nobody should be in this community saying what's going on is okay. Like this bad-mouthing people, lying. You know, Sean and Patrick and Mark have children in the schools. Somebody hears it, they go and repeat it, then the parents repeat it and the kids hear it and they take it to school. That is no way for our children in this community to be brought up. So I just think that everybody needs to stick together and, and do what's right for this community, not lying and doing whatever to get a position. 'Cause I don't think it's gonna happen, there should be good people in this community to let it happen. And these people that's got attention seekers disorder, ignore them. And if you ignore them, they'll quit thriving on this attention and saying bad things. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment?
Just like to add that I think Commissioner Whedon and Commissioner Vianzki's comments regarding the formation of a DDA make a great deal of long-term sense. I mean, uh, we tend to, in the investment world today, we tend to have a quarter-to-quarter mentality. But the long-term, uh, benefits of a DDA are definitely there. I've served in the past, both as a DDA member and later as an advisory member, and I saw a lot of good done by a DDA. And I do think that, uh, it should be capitalized by the city, that we had good people that were serving with the DDA in the past. There was a lot of pushback from prior city administration and some of the commissioners as well, when the DDA would try to get things done. And, and to the earlier point about, uh, the eight thousand dollars in the budgets, the objection was, was that the capital's not being well-spent. That was the sole objection. And so to that point, uh, I would urge the commission to take that under further consideration, that a DDA should be in the mix. I would further add that this, uh, this proposed form of agreement would do well to have it subject to a review by a DDA, if not now, in the future. Because again, it's about bringing together all the intellectual capital of the community. And again, there's, there are, there are good business people in town who have value, who can bring value to everything that's happening with Main Street and with the DDA. In, indeed, you know, I've seen a lot of money over the last twenty years spent on streetscape and what I'll just humbly say, uh, low return on investment, uh, expenditures. You know, for my part, I would rather see the, the capital being allocated more with a tilt toward marketing and promotion, certainly with regard to business development. These are good expenditures, raises the tax base. These are good expenditures, raises the tax base, uh, brings capital, brings new investment into the town. These are good things, so, uh, I'd, I'd really like to see you give, uh, much more consideration to this DDA, uh, uh, concept. It's, it's good for the community. And, uh, no objections on Main Street, good people here, uh, and I, I respect, uh, what they're, what they're doing. But again, my mantra is budgets and financial controls. Those, uh, if you set a budget, you should, it's sources and uses. The capital's coming in, how is it being used? What's the peering like? How is that capital, uh, being expended? Is a wise expenditure. These are the questions that the commission should be asking. That's just good business. That's, that's it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, completely separate topic, but I just wanted to remind everybody that the world's biggest Olympic watch party is on. Um, Wednesday, seven AM, rain or shine, we're going to be in the common. Um, we've gotten, uh, confirmation that the local affiliate WNDU is in touch with NBC National, and they're setting up a feed, so it's very likely Buchanan could be, uh, before the eyes of the world on, on the Olympic network. A couple of cool backstories, um, Betty Roberts, Hannah's mom, will be interviewed tomorrow, uh, pre-competition, uh, by NBC, and, um, uh, we'll be live, uh, Saturday morning, or Wednesday morning, Wednesday morning, seven AM. Uh, there'll be a series of live feeds, kind of ramping up to the live competition. We'll see what happens, and then there'll be a rebroadcast at seven PM, so, uh, hope to see everybody out there.
Thanks, Rich.
Big thing.
Go, Hannah.
Chief Burnett, while the cameras are here, reminder, next Tuesday is National Night Out Against Crime. Um, so we invite the community to come with us, have fun, celebrate, but also take a stand together against crime.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other public comment? Okay, with none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Thank you.
Who seconded?
Larry.
Thank you.
Hmm?
Money.
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 Yes.
Dennison?
Yeah.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski. You're adjourned.
I didn't want him to get lynched.
You're out of here, right?